And that clock ain't all right?
No.
I bought that new one.
You better turn it into warranty.
Huh?
You better turn that in for warranty.
I don't want to buy it.
Is it slow or fast?
Yeah, we get over to the new building and we have the clock in the park.
Chad is making us a clock. And it's gonna be one that plugs in. Hopefully, our next meeting will be at the new building. Mm-mm. I'm not thinking of you.
Why?
Close.
I got five fifty-seven.
Five minutes.
He's cold-blooded.
Walk out there and walk back in.
Probably two.
I just walked in there.
Two.
Right before you do.
Plug in.
Jared, you going down next week?
Tuesday, Tuesday night. Drive back late Wednesday, drive back home. Are you gonna be down there? Sunday or Monday?
Sunday.
Till Thursday? Love it, buddy. Good luck.
Ready?
I'm ready.
My stand from pledge, please.
Pledge.
For the regions to your flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the municipal, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, August fifth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. You got that chance to read the minutes from July first?
Yeah, I have. I might can motionally accept them as presented. I second.
Call in favor?
Aye. May I say? I apologize to everybody here, my hair and aids went on a blink and I can't get into them all. So sign language would help, but I can't read that either, so I'm not gonna have it.
My sign language is all perfect in American language.
But you know? So I'm not gonna hear any complaints in that one.
Bank reconciliation for June twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion, wait.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Payroll allowance docket for the month of July twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion, wait.
I second.
Call in favor? Aye. Okay, overtime for the month of July twenty twenty-five.
Having read it, I should make a motion, may approve it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Huge rate study, Jared Hall and Brandon Burden.
All look Brandon off the hook. It's just me, Jared Hall with Cronin Associates, and I'll hand out a couple of things here, I don't know. Oh, did you? Let me use mine up.
But yours are pretty.
Take them home. Do you want me to hand them out? I got like ten.
Oh, that's fine.
Is that the same thing as the?
Yes.
Probably.
But his is prettier.
Is that different to me?
No, it shouldn't be.
Oh, okay.
If I say something that's different, then use the other one.
We're racist anyway. I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Easy. Check him on the board. You want me to yell or you just wanna make your own assumptions?
They're real.
Well, good evening, appreciate you guys having me up here. Like I said, Jared Hall, O W Cronin Associates. We're financial consultants in the municipal world, this is all we do. I believe it's been a few years since I've been up here, might have been pre-COVID. Years fly by, but.
I think it was.
So Marcy reached out to us and we've been working with Jill on the wastewater, because I believe you guys have some projects that they're starting to identify on the wastewater side. So we went ahead and put together a rate study. I know one of the drivers, and we'll get into it, is your current cash balances are depleting. So just as things go from an operations side, the revenue's not sufficient to cover the expenses. But basically, what we do is we start, we take the historical financial data, look at that, make some projections based on that, and then determine what kind of rate increase you may need. So tonight would be, and we don't have an ordinance tonight, do we?
We don't have an ordinance.
So there's no introduction.
Nope.
This is just informational. After the meeting, if you guys deem it necessary, I believe we've drafted an ordinance for the next meeting to introduce, and then if you wanted to continue moving further, you would have a second meeting in which you would have a public hearing, and then could so adopt it at that meeting. So you still would need to have two more meetings if you wanted to, you know, put the new rates in place, but just kinda lay it out for you. If you wanna go ahead and flip to page two, looks like this. So we prepared three years of financials, and apologies, I'm trying to talk loud, so they can hear me here. But so twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four. At the top there, you have your utility plant and service. So this is about, this is the estimated value that you guys have made into your current system. I don't, it's not exactly perfect, because I don't think the accounting records kept track of every single penny, but about seven point seven million dollars spent on your current system. Below that, you have cash and investments. So you'll see, starting at the top, we have the operating fund. That's the fund, as the name implies, where all your operations, so things like salaries come out of that, your electric bill comes out of that. Below that, you have a sewer improvement fund. So are you guys there? Sorry. This page right here, yeah. Yeah. You there? Okay. So I get back up. So at the top there, you have that utility plant and service, value seven million dollars. Then below that, we have cash and investments, and I'll get into the numbers here in just a second. But you have your operating fund, and then your sewer improvement fund. Think of that as your, in your case, it's your savings account, your depreciation fund, your emergency fund, whatever you wanna call it. And as you can see, you've kept three hundred thousand dollars in that, and while it probably may seem like a big number, you guys probably know how quickly an emergency break in the pipe or something at the plant happens, how quickly those funds could be depleted. So, you know, it's nice to keep some reserves available so that you can, you know, make things, you know, fix things as they, as they break, instead of having to go out and borrow money, kind of on a limb. You have stormwater improvement fund, so you keep, is that an improvement fund or is that a stormwater operating fund?
That's an operating fund.
So that would be your operating fund for your stormwater utility, I need to fix that. So all your stormwater revenues go in there, and I believe you have some stormwater expenses come out of there.
Not too much.
Not too much, that's right. And then you have a bond and interest fund, in which every month, I believe Marcy should be transferring money from the operating fund into that sinking fund, or the bond and interest fund. And then it builds up so that when the bond payment is due every six months, the money's set aside. It's much like an escrow on your mortgage, you know, the bank takes, you know, a little extra for your taxes and insurance, then pays it on your behalf. That's kinda how that bond and interest fund works. And then the debt service reserve fund, that is money set aside, it's required based on the bond covenants, it's set aside, it's one year of debt service. It's a security for the bond holder, so if you become insolvent, or for some reason you don't have money to pay your bonds, you have that money set aside to make the payment. And the idea is that it gives you time to, you know, if you run out of money, to set rates high enough to generate enough funds to start continuing to pay the bonds. So those are your five funds. We can kinda look at what they've done. So if we start on the operating fund, you'll see back in twenty twenty-two, you had about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, and slowly, it's declining, right? So we're down, at the end of twenty-four, we're at forty-seven thousand. Do you have a number, current number? I know, putting you on the spot here, but.
That's okay.
I would imagine it's probably less than forty-seven thousand, which isn't, not a lot of room, not a lot of margin there.
Twenty-seven nine forty-one.
Yeah, so you see where we're headed here. Improvement funds maintain stable at three hundred thousand. Your stormwater improvement fund has increased, I think possibly, probably maybe reallocate some expenses, justify some expenses to that, but that's not gonna fix the cash flow problem related to the wastewater utility. Bond and interest fund, that moves up and down. Frankly, I just ignore that, because it's reserved restricted anyways. And the same thing with the debt service reserve. I will note that the debt service reserve in twenty twenty-two was a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and you'll see it decreased down to the seventy thousand. If you look down below that, we have the outstanding debt. So you had a two thousand and five bond outstanding in twenty twenty-two, and a two thousand and sixteen bond. What happened was we, we used some of the funds from the debt service reserve together with the bond and interest fund to pay off the two thousand and five bonds. Therefore, it reduced what is required to be held in the debt service reserve fund. So that's why you see it go from a hundred and thirty-three down to seventy. Those monies are all restricted, I think we talked about that, right? That you have money sitting there restricted, go ahead and pay down the bonds, reduce your interest expense. But now, as of the end of twenty twenty-four, you had the twenty sixteen bonds outstanding in the amount of six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And just as a note, those pay off in twenty thirty-five. They're at two percent interest, which is, is very good. It was a twenty-year bond, so it was S R F. And, you know, so it's, it's as good a debt as you can have, right, to fund the projects. Is there any questions on that? Okay. Go on to the next page. So page three is the income statement or cash flow. So you'll see, we presented the same three years, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. At the top, we've got operating receipts. So you see your wastewater, it's held pretty consistent at that, you know, right around that three hundred thousand dollar mark. You guys don't have a lot of change in customer counts type usage, things like that. So I would expect that, other than any rate changes through there, to remain consistent. Same thing with your stormwater penalties and other receipts. So, I mean, really, your revenues are consistent, so, I mean, that's a good thing. So we know we're working with a good baseline. If we go down below that, we have our operating disbursements. Looking back in twenty-two, the total operating disbursements was a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. We, it increased as we went from twenty-two, twenty-three into twenty-four. Primarily, it looks like salaries and wages. Did you reallocate, or did we add some people, or just increases?
Increase.
Increase.
Increases, okay. So, you know, increases in, in wage, and, and then just generally increases in everything. I think everybody understands inflation and that costs go up over time. So looking at twenty twenty-four, this will be our test year, so we're gonna base everything going forward off of that, and I'll, I'll show you that here in a second. But if we look at twenty-four, we brought in three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We spent two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in operations. That leaves us with seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars of net operating receipts. So then down below there, we have interest income as a, as a source of revenue. And then we have our bond payments. So we have the one bond outstanding, and you can see, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars in principal and fourteen thousand dollars of interest. Your annual payment on that outstanding bond is gonna be around that seventy thousand dollar mark. Within a thousand dollars, it's there. And then we had some capital outlays, expenses in twenty-four, of twenty-four thousand dollars. So you go down to the bottom, you can see your net increase, decrease in cash was sixteen thousand dollars. So you're walking right on a thin line as we saw in our cash balance. So we had slight reduction. So frankly, it's a good time to be, as good a time as any to be doing this, right? Like before you're in a deficit, right? So you, you know, you can take action to keep, keep things moving, because you gotta keep paying the bills to keep, you know, keep the, the treatment plant working. Any questions on that? All right. If you go to page four, this is a schedule, we kinda like to show, you know, everybody kinda asks like, what, what should we have? It's cash balances. This is really a minimum. So per your bond ordinance on your twenty sixteen bonds, you're, you're required to maintain at least two months of operating expenses in your operating fund. And I'm emphasizing minimum, because as you're gonna see, that counts out to about forty-two thousand dollars, which doesn't leave, it's not a lot of money, you know? But you're right there, or at least at the end of twenty-four, you're right there. As Marcy mentioned, you're down to twenty-something thousand in your operating fund. The sewer improvement fund is unrestricted. You could take that money, move it into our operating fund, and use it to pay the light bill, salaries, but, I mean, that's buying you time, and it's taking away from any reserves in case of an emergency. So that is an option. Same with the stormwater improvement fund.
We did move seventy thousand already this year.
So that three hundred thousand is now two twenty-five. Okay, so you've already, and we're down to twenty-seven thousand. Okay. So, yeah. Bond and interest fund and debt service reserve are restricted. You cannot move that money to your operating fund, basically counted as spent money effectively. Any questions? Okay. All right, page five is the amortization schedule on that twenty sixteen bond that's outstanding. So you can just see your payments over between now and September of twenty thirty-five, two percent. Everybody asks refinance it, refund it. I can't do better than two percent, fortunately. But, but of course, we always look at that as potential option. Page six, I like this schedule. It shows the dollars billed, the gallons billed, and then the customer, or a number of billings that occur each month and by customer class. I think it just shows, you know, what kind of, I think most of you probably know, right? You're heavily residential community, but you can see that, you know, you have about six hundred customers, five hundred and sixty-five of them are classified as residential. There are thirty-five commercial, seven government, and four church. And, you know, your consumption or usage in dollars kind of reflect that. You know, most, ninety percent of your revenues in gallons are in your residential customer base. And then on to page seven, so calculation of your I and I, or infiltration. So I say, we put this together with a grain of salt, that we're not engineers, but based on the data, so we pulled the inflow data from the MROs, so that's the flows coming into the plant. We compare that to the total gallons that are billed. So I believe, you know, like forty-nine million gallons coming into the plant. You're billing twenty-seven million, eight hundred thousand gallons. So there's a variance of twenty-one thousand, which calculates to about forty-three percent. That's basically saying that forty, you know, there's water coming into your system from somewhere other than what's coming in from a house, like a connected service line. And so I don't know all the exact projects. I know, like Jill, they're looking, I'm sure they're looking at the entire system. But, you know, one of the things to help the system is to fix the pipes that are allowing that I and I. Are you C S L combined?
I was gonna say ask Andy.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So are they, are you guys, is that part of it, looking at the I and I reduction, the project? Or, because if you reduce I and I, you therefore need theoretically less capacity at a plant, right? It all kinda works together. So we put this in here, I know the engineers are much more on top in, in yourself, but is this, does this align with what your understanding is, about forty percent? Okay. Any questions there? So that kinda like sets the historical, financial billing, you know, information. And then, so we take that, and if you go to page eight, we have to, you know, we're gonna project forward what we think, you know, your operating expenses are. So this is just your operations, and where it says test year, that is the twenty twenty-four number. So that ties directly to page three in the report. So we start there, total two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And, you know, we talked with Marcy, and talked with Jill, and talked with Andy, and kinda went through, and based on our experience applying like an inflation factor, you know, we applied, you know, an increase of about twenty-four thousand dollars, so to get it up to two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And that's, it's about three years. I'm not comfortable going much further than that. Now, it might come in and they last for ten years, right? Or one year. But what we try and do is get, you know, project rates that are good for three to four years. Fortunately, I don't have a crystal ball to know, you know, I don't even know what three to four years, but, you know, that's where we, we target. So we've set a operating budget, as you will, of two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So we'll take that number, and go over to page nine. This is where we bring everything together, this is where all the magic happens, I guess. So we put together two options. Option one is, because there is contemplation discussion about a project in the future. So that's really what option two is, it's more of a presentation for you guys to see what that may look like. Option one is what I feel like you should strongly consider, given the current financial status of your utility. So if you look, we start with the two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars that we calculated on the previous page. We have to account for the debt service on those outstanding twenty sixteen bonds, that's sixty-nine thousand. We have what is called bond coverage, working capital depreciation. So you have to have at least a dollar twenty-five available for every dollar of debt service due. That's bond coverage. We also, in talking with Jill and Andy, there are some PEGO projects that you guys need, asset management plan stuff, that the ninety thousand dollars, I think aligns with what we had discussed, that would kinda keep, you know, replacing, updating those assets as they expire and go offline. So we add all those together, that means you would need about four hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. We go down below there, you can see in our test year, we brought in three hundred and one thousand dollars of wastewater revenue, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-one of stormwater, and eighty-five hundred in penalties. So three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That gives us a shortfall of a hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fourteen, or thirty-eight percent of just the wastewater receipts. So what we propose is a thirty-eight percent increase on wastewater only. And you can see the rate impacts down below there. So three thousand gallon rate currently is thirty-five dollars and fifteen cents, and we go to forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Four thousand gallons is forty-five, eighty, and we go to sixty-three, thirty-five. Option two is basically the same, but what we did was, we just ran a model that assumes, and you'll see down here in the bottom right, you know, a twenty-year financing on three point two, three million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And I know when talking to Jill, she was like two, four, six. I think they're really early on in their, the P E R process, so they don't know exactly where it's gonna come in based on the needs of the project, but based on their initial review, they felt like somewhere in that range. Is that? So we said, look, let's just run an, an, an option or scenario, so that you guys can see like, what does a hundred dollar rate look like? They can run infinite possibilities, but what you can see is that, you know, at, you know, three point two million dollars, no grant funding, none of that, we're really early on in the stage, in the, in the process. You know, you're looking at about a hundred and eighteen percent increase on the current rates. So is there, if I missed anything, or have any questions, or?
And that's also assuming that we won't do a water increase, right, this year?
Yeah, I haven't, we didn't look, talk, think about, well, we talked about it a little bit, but this has no bearing on the water utility. The hundred and eighteen, let's just, what if, say you move forward with a thirty-eight percent now, and then in a year, two years, you want, you need to do the wastewater project over here? It's not a hundred and eighteen percent on top of the thirty-eight. So in that case, it would be another fifty or sixty percent. But just wanna make sure it wasn't, you guys didn't think it was compounded or phased in. And this is always tough, that part, because it's really early on in the engineering side of things, as far as, but, you know, the, the size, the cost of the project. But always, in my experience, it's like, get the information out there, so you guys are at least aware, you know, what that, what it looks like, you know, or could look like. And then the last page would be the rate schedule, like what the rate schedule would look like. You guys had that user charge and debt service charge separated? I mean, we just, I don't, we talked about, we didn't even know why, so we, we put them together. So together, they're ten sixty-five, and like, if you went with option one, it'd be fourteen dollars and seventy-three per thousand. And then option two, the twenty-three, twenty-six. We also talked about, down below here under system development charges, putting in a capacity fee. So what that means is, somebody comes in, says, I wanna build a house and connect to your system. They need to buy into the system, because, well, I know, like you three at least, live and pay on, and you've been paying into the system for years and years and years. So the idea is that, like, somebody comes in, moves into town, and says, hey, I wanna, I wanna hop on the system that you guys and all your ratepayers have been investing in, building over the years, that they would have to pay to buy into the system. We proposed two thousand, we calculated, I mean, we could justify much more amounts of making it still palatable for developers. I would say this is not.
Are, are other towns including this?
Oh, yeah. This is, that, well, we talked about it, and we were like, do you have this? And they said, no. And I'm like, this is the easiest, that's the easiest to pass, because it only applies to new customers. It doesn't affect any of your current ratepayers. So anybody moving in needs to equitably buy into the system, and that helps with future projects and things like that. So we did put that in. And I can talk more about it, but usually.
We talked about the wordage also on our.
Tap fees.
Tap fees.
So, yeah, it was a little, it said fifteen hundred plus cost of materials. And we got talking about it, and.
Andy, I think, yeah.
You, and, and so we, we tweaked it to say either fifteen hundred dollars or actual cost, whichever is greater. And you guys speak to that, because some, some connections are.
Yeah, I all know what we're talking about.
Okay, there, okay, all right. Okay, sorry. Yeah, so that, we thought that would be something to clean up, so that you could recover your actual expenses. Happy to answer any questions, explain anything.
So if you wanna move forward, you want to direct, do you guys prepare the ordinance?
Nah.
Or is that?
We could, I would prefer not to.
Okay.
And we can give you like an exhibit or copy, you know, the rate schedule, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's no problem. I, I know, I just did one at Los Anvill.
Do what?
We just did one at Los Anvill, so I've got.
Oh, yeah. But yeah, if they, if you all want, I guess, to move forward with at least preparing one.
We have, we've introduced the ordinance at the next meeting. Then we would have to advertise a public hearing prior to the adoption of it, which would be at the following meeting. You have to give at least ten days notice, so you're probably looking at, we introduce it in September. You have to give at least ten days notice, so you're probably looking at, we introduce it in September, so, and then you would be looking at it October. Before you get adopted in October, you can make it effective whenever you want, first year, you can put an effective date on it, if you wanna wait till-
Given the way your cash flow is going, uh, sooner, sooner than later, I mean, doesn't matter to me, like, uh, but my advice, you're running out of money. Like, so, effective immediately, and then that would, once you adopt it, Marcy would keystone-
Keystone.
To get it put in, and then get it in the bills as soon as-
Sorry, November.
So it's probably gonna be at November, December anyways, before it gets the bills.
You have to do something.
Move forward.
Los Anvill and Modoc, they're up to a hundred after their projects down there. Which is the cost of, of your project here, it's the same. Option one, please, like, I'm-
Yeah, that's my recommendation to you.
Can you just direct me to prepare an ordinance, uh, consistent with option one, and I can do that and bring it back to the next meeting for introduction?
On favor, uh, making an opt, for option one?
Alright.
Aye.
Do you have an email? Is it on his own?
Uh-
I have it, I can send it to him.
Alright, that's my spot.
Yeah.
Yep. I am, thank you, Derek.
Well, if anything else comes up.
Yeah, thanks.
City Building. The library has asked permission to use the city building garage for a book sale during the chili cook-offs. Set up September twenty-sixth, and set would be to twenty-seventh.
Are you guys okay with them using the bay?
I am, no, I'd be fine, yeah.
Capital asset reporting for calendar year twenty twenty-five, Peterson. Consulting services, three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I mean, is that motion?
We need an approval.
I'll make a motion, I approve. I guess I'll second.
On favor, aye. Today's, yes?
Oh, I'm proud of you.
Marcy will be at ILN CT Conference July tenth through the fourteenth.
How about August tenth?
August, what did I say, July?
July.
Yeah, August. Right-of-way use permit.
We have an ordinance, um, pretty well put together, which Marcy will try to get out to you in the next few days to look at. Because I think you guys should all review it, and Marcy should review it, to make sure it's all practical and you're in, and that's to street terms, like you were talking about, what the fees are gonna be, and how that procedure's gonna work, so, we'll get it out to you in the next couple of days to look at. You have your emails, Marcy?
I do.
Burn pile, someone left in sections.
Yeah, I received a text on Sunday, I think it was, with someone leaving fence sections and down on the burn pile.
Pictures of the vehicle in?
Nope. I just don't know what we can do.
Have it or don't have it, pretty much, is what I would say. It's bad that certain people were running up.
Try to provide it for the citizens.
That'll be on the next one, Bill.
It's not the first time, it could be the last time.
Yeah.
No.
Andy even put signs down there saying brush only, and-
We've always had a sign like that, we just didn't have the sign.
Where'd they bring it?
Well, we don't know who did, normally we-
Sections of fence?
Normally, we can figure it out, but we just don't know who took down the fence.
That's what we got done for us.
My company, my hometown.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying it didn't, I'm not saying it could come from out here in Farmland, we just don't know who it was. I mean, it wouldn't be the first time me or Joe's went to somebody's house and said, go down here and take out your stuff. You know, they leave a box, or leave something stupid down there, you know, the one time was there in the ice storm, a guy left his two chairs and couch down there, but he put the box that his new stuff came in there. And I'm like, go get it, or alright, you take it for littering, and they went and got it, but this time, we didn't catch them. You know, I don't know who it is, I know he doesn't know who it is, and we done went down there and told him to go and pick their stuff up, so, it happens. I, I hate it, but, you know, I don't know there's any way you're gonna stop it. You know, I know in the new building yet, we get power, we should put some cameras down there, but they come in there at two o'clock in the morning, the cameras, unless they back right up to the license plate on the camera, you're not gonna know who it is. You know, cameras aren't good at night.
Realistically, the only thing that's hard on the back of tires.
Yeah.
At, at random, and it does always happen, but, me.
Could we shut that down, say at six o'clock?
Oh, shit.
It's, it's a pain.
Or eight o'clock?
We've done it, and they piled up in front of the gate, or they're gonna burn him up all night long. And all weekend, they're gonna stop at his house, and have him go down there and unlock it, let him in, and-
Forty dollar callouts all weekend, huh?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah, I mean, that's just what it is, I mean, it's just, and it sucks, because he lives right there, but that's what people do, you know? They chose that day to clean their brush up, and they, they wanted to get rid of it, so they're gonna burn him up, and he's standing right there, I mean, what do you do, say no? I mean, been there, done that, so.
Put out notices on the town.
And those aren't the, the, you know, I agree, but those aren't the people that's doing it, it wouldn't make a difference.
You're not gonna stop it.
Yeah, I mean, we've done pretty good here lately.
Yeah.
I mean, we closed it at the right time, and we opened it at the right time, we did, we've done really good the last couple of months, and one person screwed it up for everybody, so, yeah.
You didn't catch me, did you?
No, well, I mean, unless somebody drives by and sees somebody's got a fence that's tapped down, let us know. If it matches, one of us will go down there and take care of it. I might just deliver it back to their house.
Quotes for the exterior of the new city building.
You guys have those, I have two quotes, I called, um, Phil, he was supposed to be here last Thursday to meet up with me, and he didn't show up. And I hadn't heard from him, so you have two quotes, the first one's from Troy Vane, and the next one is from a guy named Jeff, who just moved into town in March, he lives out in Wolfwood Acres, has his own business. He, um, Troy proposes replacing all the shutters, Jeff says he doesn't think we need to go into that expense, so that's a big difference in the pricing.
I'll make a motion, we go, Building Masters, five thousand, seven, 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 sixty-four. I couldn't hear. I made a motion for Building Masters, this one.
I'm in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
I'm sorry. This does come in handy when you're at home, you don't have to listen to the law.
That's good.
What?
That's good. That was Building Masters.
Yes.
Okay, historic the Farmland, that one? Police, written report for July. Seven calls for service, three medical assists, one domestic arrest made, one fraud.
I'd come motion, we-
I wanna change the mayor.
I'd come motion, they accept the report as presented.
Favor, aye.
We still need him to sign.
Email from Robin Lawrence, South Main Street.
I read it.
Yeah, I gave it to, to Melvin as soon as it came in.
The, the littering is, I don't need to put a sign that says you can't litter, that doesn't make no sense, I mean, you know, and there's one Parker cop that's burning up the streets. It's not like the whole police department's out there tearing them up, there's one kid that's out there that's doing it, so, you know. And it was just bad times, she brought it in when all the construction was going on, so I don't know who was speeding through town, because you couldn't go to the H and B, you know? So, well, we'll see, I seen Joe down there the other night sitting, so, I know we're looking at the road, so.
We, we had talked in the past about buying those automatic signs, but, and I was in favor of them, but in the, at the current climate, financially, I'm not sure that I wanna spend the money for them. They turned out, what are they bought?
Four grand.
Four grand a piece, and we talked about buying two of them, but I just, I'm hesitant right now.
You couldn't do it on Main Street, was it?
Yeah, we can, it just takes a lot. Brad Fisher's had taken about three months to get it done.
I'd have to go through my email, but if I remember right, it's like twenty twenty-seven, we're slated to get the state ones anyway, I don't know how long that is, but, but we actually get them, and they post them, but we're on the rotation, I remember a couple years ago.
Thirty, thirty-seven.
We emailed it, uh, Greenfield, and that was what they told us, but.
Well, if we got one that was movable.
We still would have to do a permit from the state. We can't put a sign on State Highway without-
I mean, we could do it on Jackson Street.
Yeah, yeah.
On the street.
Troy Lynn's all right, if they could physically move them post to post.
Well, I mean, theirs isn't, I mean, he can make it that way, but, yeah, he has to, I mean, they, they're different signs, they're not the posts we use. So you have to put it somewhere that's not shaded, because it has to have sunlight, that's, it works off sunrings, it's solar, so it gets it. It's an SD card, and then, you know, he said, when he first set it up, I don't know if Steve talked to him, he had it set to send him an email on certain speeds.
Yeah.
And, like, it was just going nuts, because it was, like, he set it at twelve miles an hour, or whatever it was, and he was like, his email was just full the next morning, because it's just sending all the stuff. You know, it's just one of those things, but then, and then, like, the local guys found out, like, that Brad was getting emails, so then it was a speed contest to see who could get the highest, like, a hundred and six down twenty-seven or something. It doesn't take a picture, it just gives you the speed of the car on time at once, you know, so, I'm not saying they're, they're bad, they're a bad thing, but pretty expensive. And if somebody takes one out, and they don't stay, and we're out, you know, four grand.
Don't have it hard or free?
Nah, I don't think they sell those hard or free.
I will say, uh, I think it does help to have those lines painted on the street at the stop sign. The one in the, at the MS building, I noticed that they're a little more aware that they need to stop there, so, maybe we could do that at more of the stop signs.
I knew that was a bad thing to start.
I'm sorry, but.
So while we're on that, I did, um, so I talked to Marcy and, about her parking lot, and if she's gonna keep her handicap, and then we have the two down here. So I ordered handicap stencils today, and then we'll be able to paint the handicap stencils on her one spot, and then we'll paint those lines over there, repaint them, get them away from the yellow, and put them white. Since they're there, they'll be easy to paint over, so you can't start up a line like that, I would look funny if I painted a started line, but, so we can repaint those.
Should, should there, well, should there be one north of the tracks?
That's State Highway. Like, they came in and put one at the Topaloos, and the Topaloos isn't even open, so, I mean, I don't know what their rhyme or reason, and where they put their handicap.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where they put them on Main Street anyway.
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, yeah, most people that are parking on Main Street are pretty able-bodied, they wanna park on the side street if they're handicapped, because they don't wanna get out of traffic.
Yeah, it should, should've been like the first space on the Henry Street.
Right, right, and I know Leslie has two, but Leslie came and had hers, I mean, there's an ordinance for Leslie's two, and then, once the city building moves, we'll get rid of the fifteen-minute parking sign out here, and, I mean, it's only good for Monday through Friday anyway, but, I mean, we'll get rid of that sign, and get rid of that ordinance, we won't need it anymore if they're moving over there, I'm not gonna use it for the police department, so.
Does the parking slots need to be repainted?
Yeah, I'm, I was gonna go over those, since I got the extra paint. Yeah, they're pretty good, I had them done professionally a couple of years ago, um, they come in and done it, and when they do that, they last way longer, you know, just, I mean, you'll, you'll see that.
Lot longer than when you do it.
Yeah, than when I do it, I mean, because I'm not gonna use this, they use one of them hot things, like they do when they did the railroad tracks and the crosswalks, like, that paint will stay. You can see the difference between that paint and the paint that I got to do the stop bars. So I did those stop bars, and I did down there on South Plum, so two places I did it, because I know that was as bad, so I put them down there just to try to help out, so. It's fairly easy, just hot when you do it, or was that day?
Contract with Animal Control with Winchester.
So, me and Brad Fisher, Lynn Town Marshall finally sat down, we discussed this for a long time, trying to figure it out. We sat down with their Animal Control and the Chief of Police, and we got Ridgevilles and the counties, Ridgevilles is, obviously, they're smaller than us. We used Ridgeville, I got it to Jason, and Jason had it done that day, and back to me, like, I didn't even know it was there, didn't get it back to him, but, um, so we come up, to start with, they wanted to go with a one-year contract, and that was basically just to decide, to figure out how many times we actually used them. If it's gonna be a whole lot, then we'd be, we raise the money, or, and that's why, because I want a three-year contract, so we don't have to do this every year. But they suggested a one-year start with, we both, us and Lynn both agreed to two thousand dollars for a year. And it does give the citizens of Farmland the right to take animals over there, but if you surrender your own animal, you have to follow their rules, so they have a, a, adoption fee, or whatever they have, if you turn your animal into them, you have to pay money. It's not like they take it for free, but it has to come with, this'll just cover the town of Farmland. Um, it won't cover people that are outside of Farmland, um, if we have a vicious animal that- If me and Joe have a problem with the vicious animal, we can call him, um, obviously, he'll make the decision if he comes, but he'll come and help us. You know, most of the time, the dogs we get, we get the owner back, um, and it's inclement weather, so if it's cold outside, we only have an outside facility, we can take them right away. And it doesn't even say, like, I had a- And it doesn't even say, like, I had them, I put down like twenty-four to thirty-six hours or something on the one that we were, had discussed with them, and that the contract doesn't even say that, I mean, it doesn't give a timeframe. So, if we have bad weather and we can't adopt that dog, you know, find the owner, we can take it over there. But if we take a dog over there, and that owner comes up and is like, hey, I want my dog back, they have to go follow their rules. So, whatever that fee is for them to get that dog back out, they take it back out. It says cats and dogs, they're not big into cats, because just no one adopts cats out. I mean, they're gonna, you're gonna get a feral cat that's over there, no one's gonna adopt a feral cat. We all have them in town, they're everywhere. I mean, Lynn has a way bigger problem than we do, I know that's hard to believe, but...
Oh, really?
There's just, they have a huge, because they have nothing on cats. They're just now adopting an ordinance for cats. So, um, I, it's, Jason had it done, and it looks good, other than he misspelled mayor, but I won't say that out loud.
I just copied what they did.
Yeah, so it must be a Ridgeville problem too, because it started there. But, um, so this goes from September first of this year till September first of next year, and then we'll go back over and renew it. As long as, like I said, we're not gonna use him very much, but it's nice to have him, because, you know, we really don't have a way to stop a vicious animal where he does, and he has the training. And if he has to put a dog down, he has the training where we don't. I mean, the only reason we would put a dog down is because it was attacking someone. And that's not the way that, I mean, we would if we had to, but that's not the way to do it. He has the licensing to do it the legal way. So, it's, it's a good thing for us.
I read the contract copy of it, and I make a motion, we enter to this agreement with Winchester.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, does that need to be approved by Winchester's council?
We'll sign it now, it's in the...
Yeah, so their mayor, I asked that question, because I was worried about now waiting another month. Their council has given the mayor agreements to go, to adopt into, or to sign into a contract. So, Mike said, as long as you guys would approve it, he would get the mayor to approve it, and it would be a good deal.
Streets, written report.
The big thing on the streets is the contract with Choice One Engineering. And it has what it's about, and I have it in a colored one, you guys only have the black and white one, I think. So, we figured out what the problem is with Church Street, and it's not a good, it's not very good. So, Church Street runs, this is the trailer court down on Persley Street, or at the, at the end of Persley Street. There's a structure right here, this, we've had this camera in both directions from Cooley's. The, the system runs good to here, in front of this trailer, it's collapsed, okay? So, they went in front of, into the creek and come back in, and in front of, at this trailer, it's eighty percent blocked. And when he was able to get his camera up and over, underneath this trailer is completely collapsed. So, it's under the trailer.
About to flow down the creek.
So, to continue to allow water to flow there is going to cause more problems, because then it's gonna road the ground. So, the proposal, why I have that contract, is because we're obviously gonna have to bid this out. And every time I've ever bid it out, a big project like this, we get way different bids back. Because we don't have, I don't have the knowledge to write down and, and figure out how many feet, how many structures, all that stuff. So, we, I would like to hire Choice One Engineering. The thing is, is we'll go to this structure that's already existing, they'll cap off this line, so there'll be no more water. There's nothing else in that, like, when he camered this, it was a clean line to there, there's nothing else going into it. So, we cap that off, run, there's enough fall, and the town has this as an easement, we already own this, all this ground is under us. So, we already have, this, actually, this one trailer's built halfway, or sits halfway on the town's property. So, he'll set another structure here, run, this is fifteen inch, so we'll run fifteen inch down this direction, and then it'll flow into the creek that direction. So, that's why that bid is there, they'll survey it all, they'll get it right, the piping. So, we have two options. The first option, which is what I like better, and I know it's money out of our pocket, is I'm afraid we're gonna cause more damage by continuing to have this done. I'm not saying the project's gonna start tomorrow. Is if once we get this done, and he gets the bid sheets back to us, and I can get it out to contractors to get a bid back, is get this done before we have more problems on Church Street, and it floods, starts flooding houses. Because it's, every time it floods, it's worse and worse. And then, the second option is, this can qualify for the CCMG grant, which is now one time a year, start, we can put it out, we have to put it out in October, by October, and then it would start sometime next spring. And it's an eighty-twenty now. The state took away the two a year, it's one a year, it's eighty-twenty. So, this project can be on the CCMG, but at minimum, not gonna be done until next year if we get approved for it. So, that's our two options, I don't know what it's gonna be, I know with his contract, either way, he would get everything together, whether we do CCMG or we do, we pay for it out of our stormwater fees. So, that's, that's our problem with Church, now I know there's more problems, and, and he was here, Ed Dormberg was here last week, and I was on vacation, and they had some problems with the A-frame house, and the way the water's coming off the county building. And Gary Friend sat right in that chair and said, if I cause problems with people's water, we'll fix it. So, he's gonna have to fix it, but basically, their spout that comes off the northwest corner is running water, when we had that two point one inches on Thursday night, Friday, whatever it was. It ran right over to her front door.
The house behind him?
Yes. And, and so they need to run that down spout over there east, to where that water is. Yeah. And, and that's, that's an easy fix, but I know Ed Dormberg was in here talking about fixing that waterway up that runs up that easement behind East Street, which I've been on him for a long time, and we proposed fixing it, and we didn't end up doing it. But, so as long as we can get, this is our major problem. That all flows from East Street and Per, and all that direction flows down here, underneath the Jackson Street, into there, onto Church Street, and then comes this way, it all flows this way. So, without fixing this, we're not gonna fix this. So, this is our first fix, so that's what the contract is for, for Choice One Engineering.
So, Philman's agreement to run a fifteen-inch pipe under the, under the property when they put trailers on it?
Who knows?
I mean, I like the idea of using the grant, but is it going to cause us more problems to wait till next year?
I mean, we might be buying a trailer.
For her this tomorrow.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I wa, I was there the Friday, he was here a couple Fridays ago, and was down there, and I was there. And it was raining, I got there right after it rained, and it said it took him about ten to fifteen minutes, and he could see the water. He had the camera clear up against the pipe that was eighty percent blocked, and you could see the water rising on the other side. And it's just taking it forever to get across, and then it just start funneling to the, it was on the south side of the pipe, and it was funneling across down, but it never funneled across enough that he had to back his camera out. Like, it just stayed, a small amount was flooded, and that's what it's doing, it's just taking forever. Once it rises up enough, it gets across. That's my thing, like, I know it's a lot of money and the storm, and it might be the point where when we get the bids back, it's way too much to do it for us anyway, and we might have to wait for the CCMG. I went and talked to Mike Cox, because it's the one that's the closest to his house, I mean, he always gets it. And he was thrilled that we were doing something, so...
Well, imagine, yeah.
So, you know, I know, and I told him, I said, we're trying to get it done this year, I can't promise you it's gonna get done, it might be next year. But he was just happy that we were trying to fix the problem, so... There's a little more than I expected from them, but I know what they're gonna have to do to get it fixed. I mean, to, to get a survey and, you know, all that stuff done. The construction plan is the biggest thing for me, so I can hand those construction plans to each one of our contractors and say, here it is, and then it's, you know, apples for apples. Yeah, it's not, I told this guy three hundred feet, and I told the other guy two hundred ninety feet. And, you know, I messed it up, and then they give me a quote, and, you know, I'm not, not trained in that, like, I don't know how to do that stuff, you know. This'll be a professional bid from them, and they're our engineering firm, so...
One way or another, it's gotta be done. I'm gonna make a motion, we go ahead and accept this proposal from...
All in favor?
Choice One.
Aye.
Yeah, that might help on the I and I over.
Well, as you'll say, that might be some of our problem.
That backs up like that, they can get into that.
Is that, you think that's like a county ditch, it's been there before the total court?
No idea, Ed never claimed it as a county ditch, he claimed from Jackson Street right there, that runs beside the EMS building to the east, he claimed that.
He claimed that?
He claimed that.
Off the out west.
Yeah, not, not anything else.
The beginning of it, not the end of it.
But, I mean, if you go down there and look where that spout is on the northwest corner of the EMS building, and where her front door is, and how that infiltrated, like, it's, Benji told me that, he sent me a hundred pictures, but the two point one inches we got in a short amount of time, I mean, you could see the water, the way it was flowing. It did not get in her house, it was at her front door, and it was, but it never got into her house, so... But all that is higher than that house, and that EMS building, and I'm not, they didn't do it on purpose. And she, I, when I talked to her, she wasn't mad about it, she just was hoping the water didn't get in, you know. But when you look around, and you're standing at her front porch, and you look, it's just a little, you know, concrete slab. I mean, it's obvious, you know, that that water, so they just need a longer, just to run it.
It would take nothing right over that ditch.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if even they just ran us to the east side of the building, it's gonna find its way to that, to that ditch, so...
And Ed was aware of that?
I don't know if Ed was aware of that. I haven't talked to him, he came in when I was...
Did you communicate with?
I haven't told anybody yet, but I will, I will make sure that that gets done. But I will just call the commissioner and tell him, because he's the one that sat here and said he would fix the problem.
Okay, fire. Written report.
Another slow month.
That's good, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, seven calls this month though, seven five-lapse, including a, a rollover hog hauler that took all day.
Okay, seven calls, one fire, zero mutual aids, three crashes, two medical, one service call.
Make a motion, we accept it as approved, as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open fire truck bids.
Your netbooks.
Where am I going here, to the bank, or I'm...
For the proposal itself?
Yeah, just email.
Yeah.
Proposal is right there.
You can read the amount and then just take it out of the visor. There's only one bid.
Okay, one million eight hundred sixty-six dollars, four hundred twenty-two thousand.
Make a motion, take it under advisement. One maybe. What'd you say?
I'd guess one point two.
Did you come to give a heart attacks?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion taken under advisement.
It did? It did, I told you what I thought.
All in favor?
Aye.
Might need a medical call here.
You're gonna have to do it yourself, if you're not a paramedic, I do.
How many years is this good for?
Probably ninety days.
Thirty.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Okay, utilities.
Well, let's, in the old business in the meeting, we discussed about the contracts with the townships.
We haven't done anything else with them.
Okay, nothing's been done with that yet, okay, I just...
I let Jenny know, and she said she was expecting it.
Okay.
Uh, testing at the water plant and wastewater plant, did monthly reports for plant and wastewater plant. Sent to I D M, backwash iron filters on Friday. Rushed Ohio, read stream gates daily, read meters, done meter recheck list, done meter set-offs and turn-ons, done load gates, load, and sprayed weed, cleaned trucks, motors, and shop. Ran generator and alternator pumps monthly, ordered supplies from Blue Book and utility supply. Emails from I D M about outstanding deficiencies.
We've got all those taken care of, but the only thing that is left is the top one. Did you get copies?
I gave them a copy of the email.
Yeah, we had emails, yeah.
And has a list on it.
Yeah, just the very first ones, they want the piping out and those tanks out still. Every time they come, we'd get a little bit more of it done, I still, Bern hadn't got in there and got them backed out yet. But, I'll, uh, I called I D M, called inspector, and told them we're still working on it. Told them we'll get backed out now, and get the quotes on, you know, how much it'd be, I said, we may not do them all at once, and they said, they said that doesn't matter, as long as we...
Showed surprise.
Yeah, because it's been four years, I think, on the softener. And then the, then the two iron tanks too, have been down for, I think, two years. Now, they're saying they just want to disconnect it, they're afraid that, which is crazy. If you open that up, and there's sixty pounds of pressure, the water blowing out, what's gonna get in that water? Be pretty tough to stick something in there. That's what we're saying. So, I'll get it, I'll get those backed out when Bern, I just told Bern to wait until he's got a rainy day or something like that, and then he can come down there anytime and get those cleaned out, and then I'll work on getting the some quotes on, getting over there.
Farmland F and D Agreement for Plan, Planning Study. Okay, we need to vote on this. We have a motion?
I'd like to know what, what's the approval cost, I mean, estimated cost to you.
This is for the PER grant, right?
This is for the grant.
I don't even know what you're talking about. I don't have an agenda or...
Here, let me help you, since you're lost. We're right here, down here at number three, Farmland, and whatever that is.
I mean, they've already been approved to do our PER grant, I think that's just a...
Okay, this is just, okay.
Man, got him off the hook.
I make a motion, we go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
This, has the water been shut off next door to me?
I don't know, it's me, I'm not the water guy, they are, but I doubt it.
I don't think so.
Trail is full?
Oh, yes, it is.
It's shut off?
I believe it is. I think it's been shut off since last month.
He don't need it right now.
You don't say, Dirk County Jones.
He don't need it right now, I'm just gonna watch that.
He's got plenty of water and sewage. Three squares a day.
Me, right?
I just don't want that to keep multiplying and going up, but somebody should buy that place.
Oh, oh, well.
It's fast lane, so it's laying on it, my God.
I think it's up for sheriff's sale.
Oh, is it again?
Yeah. I think that's what somebody told me and I relayed that message to, to the neighbor.
Be a nice garden lot there, neighbor.
Need a bigger garden lot?
July leak adjustments. Needs approval.
I make a motion that we.
Oh, just a little second, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Baku has hydraulic problems, needs to go to John Beer.
Yeah, it's running a little, I think it's missing. Yeah, it's getting in the spatter and too, we haven't had serviced in a few years, so. Tractor's ninety-seven, I mean.
You're not getting a new one.
I'm not saying it's new one, but you can put some maintenance into that.
Well, so you think it's more of the engine than the hydraulic?
Well, I, I know it's got a hydraulics leak.
Oh, okay.
It's had that.
That'll be fixed.
Yeah.
Not the first time it's been driven to Muncie. Be the last time. It's way cheaper hiring somebody to do it.
Alex will do it.
Yeah. Draw it out.
So we need to vote the favor.
That's what you're gonna do.
I make a motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, we'll need to rent skid loader again, a thousand dollars to fix outside of new pole bar and add gravel to the inside.
Yeah, I got all the dirt up against there, but Baku's just too, it's not for finishing house stuff, so. And then we'll start hauling that, this isn't gonna happen anytime soon, but just giving you a heads up, see if that's okay. If we go get that skid loader from the same place that we rented last time for it. You know, it's a thousand dollars for a whole week, so, and we can use it for anything too, if there's any other projects that we equal. We need to put more stonework around the outside of the lagoons, we got some spots where it's kinda slid in and we'll use it for that and
I'm gonna put it in on the good.
No, I would not.
See him over there.
Make a motion, we, it's not gonna.
All in favor?
Aye.
Benji's uti, utility truck will need new tires before winter.
Yeah, just giving you heads up, we'll get the, I'll get the quotes in there and we probably, we go, keep going to Bell, because they're the cheapest and we've got accounts set up there, yeah, so that's probably where we'll go, but I'll get a a quote before the next meeting and then we'll be set and ready, but it just needs done for winter.
Cooley's fixing leak on New York Street.
Yeah, we dug that from the meter out to the edge, to where it was getting into their driveway and into the street. And there's a pole there, now they cut the pole down, but it showed up today to do it, they never did finish it. They're about to cut the driveway and cut, hopefully not cut the new street, but to fix this leak, it's been leaking for, uh, over a month. So just let me know.
Tree roots in sewer on East Jackson.
Yeah, we just had that jetted out today, the camera guys, that are camera for the gas company stuff, found it, I mean, it was just solid. Solid roots, I had to get them in there to get it cleaned out, get it opened up.
Bids to replace the fire hydrant and two pole posts.
What's up with the corner, there's three different bids, I just gave you guys the last one.
It's the one across from the B P that, around the.
It was E C C, Cooley and Dirt Works.
Were we ever able to recover anything from the insurance company, because that was from the ten fifty, yeah?
Jason just now gave me the information on insurance, there was no insurance information on it before.
Okay, but we can go back online?
Well, the, uh, our insurance company will like, I don't know what our deductible is, what's our deductible?
I think it's up to ten now, maybe it's five.
Five thousand, so we're into that. We can go back online, usually our insurance company will have, we'll look for reimbursement from the, from the, which is the cheapest way to do it.
Yeah.
We did find, I did find the guy's insurance information, because he had it prior in Muncie. So I found the insurance, uh, adjuster, his insurance company. So if, if, if our insurance company doesn't do anything, I can send a letter to them and try to get, we got plenty of time.
Yeah, there's a misunderstanding on the report, actually, so, we finally figured it out.
They still didn't have insurance information, though.
On the accident report?
On the accident report.
They didn't get it.
Okay, never mind, wasn't our fault.
This was, this was a year ago.
Yeah, what happened when I was in Baker, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay, on the fire hydrant, E C C, seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Cooley's is six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. And Dirt Works is four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
He's getting big mess around here.
Make a motion, we go to Doorworks.
That same location.
All in favor?
Aye. Along that line, is, did we ever get, we haven't got that hydrant on, on where I fixed.
Still haven't got it in yet.
You haven't got the hydrant in?
Okay, claim doc in August fifth, twenty twenty-five, a hundred forty-one thousand, fifty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion.
Make a motion, we accept it as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Susan comments?
We got the, you've got the decals on the new truck. That looks real good. But can I get the good floor mats and seat covers for that truck? Because, yeah.
We, we do it with our new police car.
You have to have, you have to have Marcy order them, because they, they can't buy them anywhere except off WeatherTech now.
So really?
Yeah, yeah, but that's what we have in our police cars and it saves on everything.
It's gonna save the seats, it's gonna save everything.
We can dump the crap out and, and the slush and the snow, I mean, it'd save the police cars a bunch.
I make a motion, we buy them.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's all we got.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I wanna apologize, that's probably my fence down there. I bring fart and I'll go get it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being honest.
When did you find it? Two days ago.
Sunday.
Well, I got poison ivy found. But I went down.
Hey, if you come down there, if you need help, let me, I'll help you.
Yeah.
I mean, now you're honest about it, I'd help you get it back to your house.
But you can see the poison ivy.
Your problem is, you just don't want clothes.
But I was cutting grass.
Could you help me? Were you a coworker?
No, I helped him cut the grass. That's what neighbors do.
That's hilarious.
Good, because.
One of the good guys.
That's too funny.
I've seen people bring stuff.
I can't believe you sit there and let everybody talk to you.
Marcy was a bad ass, no, bro.
Oh, where's the building at?
The base building.
Oh, when you guys passed that, that's here three months ago.
We bought it, beginning of the year.
Okay.